It's so quiet in here.
It's like the moment before class starts, right?
Exactly.
Good morning. Here I call the Wednesday, March 30th, 2022, meeting of the GCU Board of Trustees Academic Affairs Committee. Will you please call the roll?
Dr. Burdenek, Dr. Kaderas.
Here.
Dr. To Vote.
Here. Thank you for having me have quorum for today's meeting. First, I'd like to acknowledge the Faculty Center Representative at the Academic Affairs Committee, Dr. David Goland. Thank you for being here. I understand that Gisela Grunberg is connecting via phone so she can hear us, but not going to be present. Also, thank you for attending, Dr. Green. We also have our compliance, Chief Compliance Officer attending, present in lieu of counsel. And it's a first meeting where we have new leadership in various areas as well. Special welcome to Dr. Schneller.
Thank you.
Recently appointed Provost and Mr. Guinness. Dr. Guinness, recently promoted to Vice President of Student Affairs. I have to always wonder because thinking it was described to me as everything student, but I had to remember that student affairs, not just everything student. Okay. So first, do we have any requests for public comments, Penny? There being no requests, we'll go into the approval of agenda. The committee members have the agenda in front of them. Do I have a motion to approve today's meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second, members, Penny, do we need to call the roll? Okay.
Dr. Kaderas.
Yes.
Dr. To Vote.
Yes. Procedures. Okay, with the agenda being approved, we have seven informational items. And hopefully, we'll have a little bit more opportunity for informal discussion as we go along.
Do you want to do the approval minutes first before you jump into the action items?
Oh, yes, I did skip that. Okay, we do have in the board book, the minutes of prior meetings in November 29th. Have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded. Penny, please roll.
Dr. Kaderas.
Aye.
Dr. To Vote.
Aye. With the minutes of the November 29th meeting have been approved, we can go into the informational items. There you go. So if we can start with Dr. Schneller and your informational items.
Yes, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here and have the opportunity to share the activities that have been going on in academic affairs. These are all largely prior to my arrival since my start date was March 16th. And we have a very robust series of presentations for you today that are focused on our innovative activities in support of student success and academic transformation. So the first, the first item is the 2022 census data. And you received the table in your materials in the board book today. Vice President McGinnis is here. If you wanted to say a few words about the census data, he'll also be talking about the housing census data as well. So we could potentially look at those two items together if that's agreeable to you, or at least in sequence.
Please.
Good morning, everyone. As you saw in your packet, the university kind of breaks it out into several different categories, being headcount, FTE, credit hours. And then at that point, it breaks it out into gender, part-time, full-time, a number of different categories. Rather than just recapping the data, what I would probably say is there seems to be a trend with our students, in particular with female part-time students, that presents an opportunity for us to probably target in future initiatives. And when I look at the data and compare it to the prior year, it appears that it's predominantly female and it's predominantly two-thirds part-time students. So we knew that when we drafted the SEM plan, that adult transfers were an important part of what we needed to go after. But this data just kind of reinforces, you know, that opportunity that we need to pursue. And we're also pursuing some good partnerships with Amazon, where Amazon employees will be coming in. They will receive an opportunity to get $5,200 a year as part of an educational benefit, which would cover them if they came in part-time, if they were to do 12 credit hours, six in the fall, six in the spring. So that presents an opportunity for us. But the data is pretty straightforward. We're still over a total of 4,000 heads. FTE, we're at 2,700. And I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with what an FTE is, full-time equivalent. So that's basically, you know, looking at at least 12 credit hours and doing the division. In the last year, and I'm going to go this route based on a meeting I had with Beverly and with the Chair, to talk a little bit maybe differently than probably how I would have presented in the past. And just say that in the last year, we've done three different campaigns to this market, the transfer market, the adult transfer market. We're entering into a new digital campaign with the assistance of marketing and Will Davis. And we just got done from doing an assessment with Ruffalo and Noel Levitz on our transfer students and have some pretty solid recommendations from that group. So what I wanted to tell you is, yes, we, we need to focus on part-time women to come back as well as full-time, and that we're taking the measures needed in order to recoup those enrollment opportunities and go forward.
Would you like to say something about the open houses that we've had recently?
Sure, I'd be happy to talk about it.
If that concludes your remarks on that, with your indulgence, like, have a question about?
Yes, please.
You, you mentioned that this is compared to last year. In your professional opinion, how much of this might be pandemic-driven, pandemic-influenced? Does this data trend also supportive prior to 2020?
Yeah, it's a great question, and it, it is. And when we look at it, we also know that students of color had a tendency not to return to campus as quickly as other students. So when I look at this loss, you know, I would say about 40-plus percent represented African-American females. And I would say then the other large portion would be white females.
So I guess the question is, will some of this resolve itself now that, now that we appear with the big quote, to be beyond the worst challenges of the pandemic? Or is this something the Times also approved, approach it and attack it to try to rebuild their attractiveness to the university? My point is that if we don't want to do too much knee-jerk saying it got horrible here between last year and this year, I'm like, well, yeah, what the entire world did, sort of stuff. So that's my only question. What, any comments on that?
I do. I, I think it absolutely is right, what we've noticed. And it's, to return to the Provost, she was asking about the open houses. So we've opened them up more than we have in the past because restrictions have lightened. And what we've seen is pretty good growth in our open house, which is a direct indicator of enrollment. So we had our largest open house just recently on March 19th, or excuse me, yeah, on March 19th, we had 120 students attend. And with family, I want to say it was over 260. And that was the largest open house we've had since the pandemic. This is a good trend. But what's even more encouraging is our April 30th open house. After nine days of advertisement, we're already at 132 student RSVPs with close to about 340 with family and friends attending. And that's still a ways off. So we're hoping that we can get back to pre-pandemic numbers for our open house.
If these open houses are to attract new students that are interested in Governor, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's an extremely high yield off of the open houses. So if they start growing, that's usually a good response then for our enrollment.
An observation that I don't know who's doing the electronic media marketing, et cetera, but I keep, I see GCU popping up a lot more frequently. So whomever is doing that, keep doing it.
Well, it's, it's, it's a combination of things, but mostly it comes out of Will Davis's office. And they're doing a phenomenal job with digital media. And also Graduate Studies did a launch with digital media as well, where they're targeting students that fit their profile. So if you go online, log into certain applications, you're probably going to see GCU. And then we'll follow you in the sense that we collect the information. We put it into our Slate CRM. Then you're in a digital drip campaign where you're going to continue to get messages until you eventually apply. We don't give you a choice.
It's the only way out?
Thank you, Dr. Snell.
Thank you. And if you would continue on with an examination of the housing census data for us.
You know, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our new Dean of Students, and he's going to talk about housing, since that's one of his areas.
Thank you, Paul. Good morning, everyone. As Paul mentioned, a lot of trends that we're seeing in enrollment are similar to housing as well. I'm sure you have seen it in your packets already. If you look at the housing data, we are really high on female students living on campus. At the same time, we still continue to be predominantly minority-serving population that lives at Prairie Place. Right now, as a spring semester, we have about a little over 80% minority-serving students living at Prairie Place, with African-American being the largest population that lives on campus. That has been very steady since Prairie Place first launched in 2014. We've consistently seen that where our biggest population living on campus is African-American students. We also, we have also noticed this year that there is a higher number of 21-and-over students, adult students who are coming back, mostly through our occupational therapy, physical therapy, some of the graduate programs that are choosing to live on campus that we did not see in the past. So those are some two or three highlights that we've noticed with our Prairie Place population. We are hopeful with some of the numbers. And as Paul mentioned, in the open house, we had a significant number of students wanting to tour Prairie Place. Since the pandemic has relaxed a little bit, we've been able, able to open up Prairie Place for tours and give them a little experience, a little taste as to what to expect if they were to live on campus. So there was a significant number, a significant increase in number of students wanting to take a tour of Prairie Place. And we're hopeful that we will be a lot better than we were last fall or fall before during the pandemic. Our goal eventually is to go back to where we had a waiting list pre-pandemic. Open any questions that you may have?
Yes.
A few questions. Number one, what, do we have a waiting list for residency at this time?
Right now, we don't have a waiting list. We're hopeful to go back to the pre-pandemic environment where we did have a healthy waiting list. Our hope is to go back to that. And we're anticipating this fall will be a good turnaround for us.
Okay, so these numbers say 100% occupancy. Is that just across, is this, is this capacity 100% occupied?
Exactly. It should kind of give you a snapshot of there's about, it gives, tells you that there's 136 students living in Prairie Place as we speak. So based on those bets, it's projected, all the numbers are projected as far as when it goes to gender, ethnicity, and all that stuff.
So my question, my, my train of thought usually leads me to here. So, so we have these 136 rooms available. What if we double that, triple that, quadruple that? Would we fill them? Is there enough demand for this at this time? This is an extreme example, just saying, trying to get a feel for perception of demand for these, this housing.
Well, the, the open house numbers have been promising. I mean, they're, they're, students wanting to, having an interest to live on campus has looked very promising right now. Students who are living there right now, 136, they're going through the recontracting process for next semester. Those numbers are looking very promising as well. That process is going on as we speak. And one of the incentives they have if they re-contract for next year is they get to lock in their current rates. So their room rates will not go up. It doesn't impact them at all. That's kind of incentive that you give them in order to live on campus for the following semester. So those numbers are looking promising. We anticipate, I, I would anticipate will be about 80 to 90% in, in the fall semester. But I think Dr. Bradford asked me a couple of weeks ago, and I told him, you know, truly, I think by 2023, we'll be back to where we have a healthy waiting list.
Yeah, if, if I could add to, to the comment, you know, our housing rates are the most affordable of all Illinois public universities. So we have a very attractive price point, especially in the Chicago market, because you know, the housing cost in Chicago is ridiculous. And so students get a better deal coming out here to live with us than to buy something in town or in Chicago. So that's very attractive. Also, the amenities of our housing complex for exceed most standard freshman-type living. That dorm living, you don't get that at Prairie Place. You have a department style with a kitchen. You got laundry facilities, convenience stores. I mean, you got a nice place for students to go. Most parents will find that place very attractive. When I dropped my two kids off at LSU, they had a gaming shower they had to share, two people in a little tiny space. You don't have that here at Governor's State. So that's very attractive for our students.
Okay, so that's one thing that the board's going to be sensitive to is, is the man for this housing also. But it seems like if we would be able to attract more students by having more available space, that, that's something that would be part of our deliberations and considerations also. Before we get off of that, I want to talk about international students. I see, you know, other than, your, your data only shows the only graduate international students currently. Is this, is this, is this a target of ours still? A target international students, trying to get them, encourage them to come to Governor's State and have some housing available for them? Or has that been demarketed? Or was that never a concern to begin with?
No, we, we work in partnership with International Student Services all the time. A lot of times what we see with international students is they, they want to live on campus their very first semester when they get here. Once they get here, they start developing their communities, and then they want to live in their community, whether it's at Prairie Place or outside of Prairie Place. We noticed that those students, once they are here, they, once they get connected, they tend to establish communities outside of Prairie Place. But at Prairie Place, we constantly see every semester, anywhere ranging from 30 to 40 international students living on campus. But when it comes to spring semester, they start off with us in the fall. Comes spring semester, they tend to move out. And they tell us upfront about that as well. At the same time, International Services does offer certain scholarships for international students who are wanting to live on campus, which covers up to two semesters for them to live on campus. So there's a lot of opportunities to give them a little taste as to what to expect on campus with all the amenities that come with it. But with international students, we do see that once they get here, they establish their own communities and want to live in their own communities then.
So other than our actions with, with International Student Services, are we doing any marketing internationally for, to track the Governor's State? And, and, you know, to tie the housing also, I assume?
We do. We, we work very closely with Enrollment Management. The Director of Admissions works very closely with us, making sure we're targeting those audiences abroad. So whatever information they get from the university, they're also getting about Prairie Place housing information. Don't get me wrong, we get inquiries all the time from across the country. And it sometimes is challenging because of the restrictions that websites may have in those countries. But we get inquiries all the time, and we work directly with those students to accommodate them on campus.
Let, let me be clear, I'm not suggesting anything good or positive or negative. I'm just trying to understand what the lay of the land is. That's, that's my sole purpose of my questions. I have no further questions.
Chair, tabula. I just wanted to add two points. I don't know if it was mentioned, but during the pandemic, we did restrict housing occupancy. So that is one of the reasons that the numbers were down, because we did not want 100% full occupancy due to the social distancing and the need to kind of isolate and keep people separate in the residence hall. So I think we went to 50%, was it, Mushthak?
That's correct. We were following IBHE guidelines and IDPH, and we reduced occupancy to about 50%. So now, as things are getting relaxed, we're opening that up. And the 136 number is a very positive number right now for the spring semester. And we only anticipated it to go up in the fall semester.
And the other point that I wanted to make is with regard to international students, given my experience at multiple universities, they love the affordability of our housing. And we have one of the newest housing complexes, even though it was built in 2014. Most other complexes are much older than that at our sister institutions, because the campuses are much older. So they have, as Corey mentioned, the dorm-style housing. We have the new-style housing. But with regard to international students, they want to come to transition. Remember, this is a cultural transition for them. So as Mushthak mentioned, once they get connected, they're looking for a very broad sense of community. By that, I mean food, restaurants, churches, you know, social organizations, so on and so forth. And that they can find in the greater metropolitan area of Chicago. And also, I think that there may be an age thing, because if our halls are largely freshmen, our transfer students tend to be older than 21. So there's some discrepancy there, which is why I believe that one day, GCU needs to build a, a second residence hall facility with a different emphasis, and it's a part of our facility's master plan. And I'll stop there.
If, if I may, you're jogging memory here, because I remember the, what is it? The ceremonial shovel that I used in building. You said 2014? It's been that long ago?
It opened in 2014, so the shovel probably was in 2012.
Oh, wow, okay. Memory lane, okay. I remember also that at the time, one of the discussions, one of the goals, GCU was close to the process of getting qualifying to be a Hispanic-serving institution as well. I don't know if that's still a goal or where we are on that. But the one item I do remember from, from that time is that I had expected to, to hear advertisement in Chicago, kind of like, kind of leave your parents, move here. And it's cheaper, and I never saw that. But kind of, so having a long story, I noticed that there is overnight rates. Is that being used? What is the, it's, can, can, can there be guests? Do you have visitors? Is it essentially also, I don't want to say a hotel, but is that practice or is that only in the list of fees?
Right now, Prairie Place is only housing students. Every so often, we do house a university guest or a staff member or faculty member they may be visiting. We do have a program that's called Faculty in Residence. We have one faculty member that lives there right now that acts as a support service to the students. But primarily, our goal is to serve students. But as I mentioned, every so often, we do accommodate a guest of the university or a staff member or a faculty member that's visiting or is just transitioning to the area.
Remind me, what's full occupancy? Is that 259?
Full occupancy over there is 288.
288?
Yes.
So we're still lost in 50% occupancy out there?
And at one time, there was issues with, I guess, the students were burning their stoves or something like that, something like that. Is that still? Well, like, they, kind of, they burned their food or kind of like?
Well, you know, when you, when you have freshmen living on, on campus, there is a lot of education that grows with it, right? So one of the very first programs is teach our students, our wonderful students, how to do laundry, right? So that's one of the very first programs, and followed by how to cook food. And when you make cookies, you don't put them on self-clean. You actually preheat it. So there's a lot of growing pains there. So when you, when you transition our students, our first-year students on campus.
Are you talking about barbecues in the bathroom or something?
Well, just forgetting to turn the on off. I'm, I'm sorry, I think you, I think you were going to make a comment on the Hispanic-serving institution?
I'll hand it over to Paul.
So there's different categories when you're talking about Hispanic-serving institution. We are an emerging Hispanic institution. So the thresholds are 15% to be an emerging, 25% to be a Hispanic-serving institution. And that's based on only undergraduate students, and it has to be normalized on an annual enrollment count. So for years, we would hit the 15-plus in the fall, but just kind of fall out of it in the spring. But we, we are an emerging Hispanic-serving institution. Many of our feeder community colleges, like we've talked about in the past, are either emerging or Hispanic-serving institutions. And that includes Prairie State, South Suburban, Joliet Junior College, Moraine Valley, not to mention the city colleges. If you talk about Daily College, then, you know, the percentage is very high. If you're talking about a Morton College, that's like 80-plus percent Hispanic-serving. So those are all great because they're all in our wheelhouse, and those are the institutions that we go to to recruit on a regular basis. Not to mention the CPS system, Chicago Public School System. Now, its predominant population is Hispanic. So we, we go to the Chicago Public Schools and we recruit there. So not only freshmen and transfers, which would be the difference in getting to that 25% because it's, again, undergraduate only.
Any more questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And so the next item is the table that you've received in your packet, which is the roster of the program accreditations for the university. Having served at a number of institutions myself and been the accreditation officer, I can assure you that the university has pursued all the appropriate accreditations for their academic programs. We continue to review additional academic programs for additional accreditations as they emerge. And we're also looking at, there are some, there are some professional organizations that are nationally known that have oversight that don't certify at the same level as the Department of Education does with accreditations, but they offer quality assurance. Things like the INCHC, the National Council for Honors Programs, AGLS, which is the Association for General Liberal Studies that provides some guidance on quality and can assist in program reviews related to general education, for example. So we're looking at some of those in addition to the roster that you see. Currently, we have updated the HLC Program Inventory Document, which is providing updates on enrollment, finances, things like that, to our primary regional accrediting agency within the academic programs. The College of Business, as you know, shifted from ACBSP to AACSB in Accreditation Alphabet Soup. And so they have recently completed their AACSB accreditation cycle. So we're in the process of completing some response reports relative to things that they had requested. And so there's that going on. And then there is the accreditation of the nursing program through ACEN. And we're waiting for final notification on their decision since their board met the end of last week. This is the area that Dr. Sexton does an excellent job in oversight for accreditation. So if you have any particular questions about the table, she'll, she is here, and she can answer those questions relative to the activities at Governor's State. questions relative to the activities at Governor State.
If I may, thank you for summarizing it, bottom line. But would you share the view, you know, I have an impression that this year, well, first, that GSU has done an excellent job on the accreditation responsibility, and puts a lot of effort into it, because there's a lot of activity.
Indeed.
But that the COVID times, and the sequence of nowadays, provides almost like a breathing space. I don't see a lot of visits coming up the next eight months or longer.
Yeah, that's normal, that's national. The accreditation agencies govern themselves as far as site visits were concerned. A number of them have been carried out virtually through Zoom, or some other web-based platform, because the agencies deemed it unsafe, or the program review teams, and some agencies had the option to say whether they wanted to come onsite or not. And so the activities have been taking place. We just don't have people coming through, you know, physically at this time, as you might be used to for those sorts of meetings.
My impression was more of, does that allow you, does that give you a breather?
Oh.
That lets you put staff to other things that you need to do for a few months?
No, it's ongoing. It's ongoing. We never take the foot off the gas for accreditation. So we keep going with that. And it is a continuous, it's part of the continuous improvement cycles in general. But the dates for, the only thing that was postponed, let me back up, the only thing that was postponed in many instances was the date of an existing site visit. In some instances, not in HLC, but in some of the other agencies, there was a waiver request. If you were due during COVID for a visit, you were able to get a waiver. We weren't in that. So we are just continuing on with everything, you know, as normal. So unfortunately, no, it didn't give us a break.
Questions? Yes, please. Just one specific question about the College of Nursing and the reaccreditation. This was a topic of discussion several meetings ago, if I recall. When would you hope, when would you expect the final report to come back? Days, weeks, months? I mean, is there a norm that we hear final word back from them soon?
We should be hearing this month. Dean Balthazar is here, if she had anything, I think she was here, if there's anything to add with that.
I just don't know, is this a perfect world to be back in a month, or a few weeks, or what?
It usually takes, it usually takes three to six months with most agencies when they're doing a review, but we're expecting our decision fairly soon. Most of them meet in February or March.
Okay, we would be interested in hearing the results of that.
Yes, well, as soon as we have something, we'll definitely let you know.
One more question.
Any other questions on accreditation?
No, if you'd like to go to the next.
All right. Well, now I'm going to turn it over. I'll introduce each one of them, but this is our showcase, where we're going to take you through some wonderful new initiatives that I've had the pleasure of learning about myself in the last couple of weeks. And I hope that as part of these presentations, you'll be as excited as we all are about the accomplishments of our excellent faculty, staff, and academic leadership. So our first one is going to be on enrollment and the Transfer Boost Initiative. And Dr. Sexton and Vice President McGinnis will be presenting on that topic for you.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here this morning. We appreciate it. And I just want to share with you an initiative that GSU didn't seek out, but IBHE, Illinois Board of Higher Ed, and the Illinois Community College Board came to us and identified us as one of the pilot universities to participate in this initiative. Boost actually should be in capital letters, because it stands for Bachelor Opportunities, Bachelor Opportunity Options, which are straightforward and transparent. And I believe that GSU was probably chosen as one of the three, because we already do this really well. You know, we've had a highly successful dual-degree program with, you know, 19 different community colleges that we've done over the years. So we've really already formed some really strong partnerships. So when IBHE identified us as a participant, they also identified Moraine Valley and South Suburban Community College as our partners for this trial. And it's actually part of a national initiative. Illinois Board of Higher Ed and Illinois Community College Board are joining with, and RPK is the initials of this group, that's kind of organizing this nationwide, to demonstrate that when you have really clear, straightforward pathways for degree completion from community college to four-year institution, that the students can be successful. They also wanted to be able to identify like a pricing range for that. So the first thing we did when we were asked to participate is, we worked with our institutional research office, and literally just asked them to kind of give us a rundown of the students that come from South Suburban and Moraine, what degree programs do they go into? And what we were able to ascertain is, you know, typically, a lot of them will go, you know, we're spread out all over. The most biggest areas were the interdisciplinary studies degree, which is more of a generalist, and some in the health professions. But what we did notice was that a lot of the students, then, who came from those community colleges, went on to earn master's degrees here from Governor State, and more often than not, their master's degrees were in the health professions. So as we met with our community college partners, and we started talking about, how can we use this as an opportunity to do something different? Because if you look on our website, we have transfer agreements with every college going, every community college going. And typically, they're for the AA, a student who might take all of those general education courses, earn an associate's degree at a community college, then come to a four-year institution. The gen eds are out of the way, they jump into their degree completion. If this were normal times, maybe that would just be the route to go. But if you look at national trends, and you've been asking about kind of national trends, especially post-COVID world, or mid-COVID, you know, almost hopefully out of a COVID world, you'll see that more students are attending community colleges to earn an AAS. They want a degree from a community college that will get them a job after two years of college. And that's the trend that we're seeing here in Illinois. That's where the majority of the students are going. Well, our transfer agreements are really written for the AA to the bachelor's degree. So when we started our conversations with the community colleges, what we thought was, let's build on this strong infrastructure we have for transfer. We had to focus on equity, because the Illinois Board of Higher Ed has their new strategic plan, A Thriving Illinois, which looks at equity, sustainability, and growth. But they also wanted pathways that were not only clear, but also affordable, that we have a cost structure that would help them get careers in these high-wage fields. So when we started talking with our community college partners, what we see is that a lot of the students in their AAS degrees come in as cohorts. They're guaranteed to finish those two years, and they immediately get a job. What those students find, once they get that job, is about three to four to five years into that new position, their employer is looking for a bachelor's degree. And so then, that's often a struggle with that student. So by partnering with Moraine Valley and South Suburban, what we've been able to do is to zero in on their AAS health profession degrees, and their information technology degrees. And we've created pathways that keep them at that 120 credit hours, because a typical bachelor's degree by IBHE definition is 120 credit hours. Many of our existing pathways of an AAS to a bachelor's tend to go over 120 credit hours, because the students come in with those with more content courses, and less gen ed courses. And typically, the content courses don't translate to our content courses. So there's gaps in their knowledge, so we have to kind of add extra courses. So when we approached the opportunity, when, you know, IBHE kind of volunteered us for this opportunity, but it was a good one, we wanted to look at, how can we assist the students at Moraine and South Suburban who are earning the AASs, and get them to jumpstart into a bachelor's degree, that while they're, you know, finish the AAS, they start working, then they work with us, and try to even get them to work with us toward the end of their AAS, to get into those courses, so that they can, even if they come to us part-time, finish with a real clear pathway, and still keep it at the 120 hours. So we were very fortunate that our team, and you'll see the names of them, worked with the leaders at the community colleges, their academic leaders, some of our deans sat down with us as well, and we met with our own faculty to kind of look at what would these pathways look like. So, you know, you can read what the goals are from the state, and what indicators they're looking for. But what we were looking at is, how can we get them in here sooner? How can we help them finish that bachelor's degree? And so we were able to create seamless AAS pathways for the information technology bachelors, for the health informatics bachelors, and for the community health. And then we're working on some other health areas, but that might take a little while, because we'll have to do some curriculum changes. But those are the areas we're focusing on. The community colleges were especially appreciative of our flexibility, because the way in which the state originally envisioned this opportunity, they were thinking, a student would be at a community college in one degree, and then come to us for one degree. And the community colleges said, there's no way we can meet these enrollment targets if that's what we have to do, because we don't have that many students in one particular AAS. So what we've been able to do is look at several of their health profession associates of science degrees that lead to, you know, professional work, and build those 120-hour pathways that get them either into information technology, community health, or health informatics. Our enrollment, and where we would start to see this, which is consistent with the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan that, you know, you've already learned about in the past, is not necessarily fall of '22, but fall of '23, since we're already targeting it with the community colleges. And we're actually a little bit ahead of the other institutions, Chicago State and SIUE, because Paul has already led conversations, Paul and Will, with South Suburban, they're setting up one with Moraine Valley, on joint marketing of these, on joint, you know, showcasing what this can mean for the students. So we'll expect to see increased enrollments by 30 students, and then we projected out 30, 60, you know, reasonable numbers of growth in these areas. And so this is our team, Lisa Helm, who's worked with creating those pathways for us, Paul, of course, in his role, Lise Schneider out of Admissions, and myself. So any questions?
I had a question. Give me a second to think of it.
Well, meanwhile, I'll make a comment. This, of course, state initiative, and you have been doing this quite some time with partnership with the junior colleges. And of course, the history of GSU starting as an upper-level institution feeds into it. But it's, to me, it leaves, kind of, we're partners with the junior colleges, but we're also competitors.
Correct.
And I don't know if that's getting to be, if we're stretching that partnership enough, if we're particularly the competing part.
So what I'll say is, we really aren't competitors for the associate of science degrees, because those are professional associate, two-year degrees, that will get a student into a career. And our freshman curriculum, our first-year curriculum, while our students are placed into what we call focus areas, that sound like degree programs, but our pathway for our incoming freshmen is really designed to address as many general education courses as possible. So the competition may be for the AA student, because they'll get that same experience if they begin here at GSU as a freshman. But remember, at the community colleges, those AAs are not growing anymore. What are growing are the AASs. So in essence, it makes sense for us, because we don't have that kind of a curriculum here for those professional degrees that someone could earn with a two-year degree from a community college. So this is the perfect opportunity for us to reimagine the pathways with an AAS to a bachelor's degree here at GSU. So it doesn't really make us competitive. The only competition is the AA with ours, and those aren't growing at the community colleges right now.
And that holds for the College of Extended Learning, too? That's not an AAS-designed program there at all?
Our extended learning?
Yeah.
So what we're doing with our own extended learning, which is actually a really unique opportunity, is they're developing the badges, where, for instance, a good example is the College of Business, I don't know if June is here, but they've worked with extended learning, where they've identified different badges. So a student could take these badging courses through extended learning, and they build on one another to be an equivalent of a credit-bearing three-credit-hour course, so they would get the credit for that. And that's another strategy to help get that person who first wants to earn these certificates, maybe apply it in their career, but eventually would like to earn a bachelor's, or eventually earn a master's, to kind of give them those opportunities to stack the credentials, to earn the credit, to kind of lessen the time to degree completion if they come to finish that master's or bachelor's.
I'd like to sometime hear a little bit about this badging.
Oh, yes. We'll put that on the agenda. We'll put that on a future agenda with your agreement, because it is very interesting, and there are some very dynamic things that are going on, in large measure because of the new Amazon partnership that Vice President McGinnis referenced a little bit earlier, that is, in the School of Extended Learning.
So you acquire some skills, and you get that, and you have enough of those skills, and then you get the credits?
Yes.
So it's like a lifetime experience, or?
Right.
Okay, great, yes.
Well, and I would say to your point, too, the real competition is with those types of programs, more than with the community colleges. Because employees can go through badging programs with different businesses, and get the credentials in-house through their professional development training. So the fact that we have an opportunity to work with Amazon and other community partners to develop an academically-based program that will, on the one hand, allow people who have not yet pursued a degree to pursue a degree, but also, there's a high number of people who are employed right now who have left their university studies. And so one of the real advantages of our new partnership with Amazon is we'll be able to bring those people back. It's called recovery programs. So we'll be doing an academic recovery program through that, to be able to help those people complete their degrees funded by their employer.
Just for future reference, this is a topic of interest, and it's including, it's the spectrum of what's available, like high school students, to get college credit, the international baccalaureate, I don't know if they still have the continuation of the college-level examination.
Yeah, the CLAP test, yes.
Or stuff that essentially hooks people in early.
Right.
But, yes, I'm very much interested.
We'll put that on the agenda for you.
Thank you.
The other thing related to the Transfer Boost, as you were saying before, is that there's a significant amount of federal funding to support pathways programs that's actually closing the gap between that kind of historic division between community college and four-years. And so what a number of institutions, including ours, is looking at, as Dr. Sexton mentioned, is when we bring the students in, in the pathway, they can come with their associate's degree, do their bachelor's, but then we're pointing them towards our master's and our graduate programs. So you have an opportunity to do longitudinal enrollment with benchmarks. So if the student completes those credits, and, you know, completes the degree successfully, then they can just move on to the next, to the next one going up. So we're working on marketing a more long-term, maybe holistic approach to attending Governor State, where you might come for your bachelor's, but you end with your PhD, especially in, or the DNP eventually in nursing, which would be very important.
I would say that that concept in higher ed is called stacking. And so you start out with smaller micro-credentials, and you build, and over time, continue to acquire other credentials, certifications, so on, that ideally would lead into our degree-seeking at the baccalaureate, masters, or doctoral level. And so even when we provide training for students and employees through the School for Extended Learning, we are always thinking about how to engage we are always thinking about how to engage them through other avenues at the university at the same time. So they become a part of Paul's database and they get marketed to, they get recruited, so that they become aware of all that we have to offer because the chances are the student that is taking something on your campus and having a positive experience that's helping them advance on their current job is the best student to recruit for future educational opportunities.
Again, the interest of the whole spectrum, and when I say the spectrum. Personal experience, I would not have been able to afford paying for four years for the graduate education. I would not have been able to complete it were it not for the ability to take exams and get college credit for those courses. And that not only on the undergraduate, but would not have been able to afford or complete a first-credit degree in 10 months were it not for the ability to take examination and get credit. So this is, you have my attention.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Well, we'll get you a report on that. And one of the things that's in our School of Extended Learning is the prior learning, which you were talking about, the credit for prior learning. So we'll be sure that you get a breakout on that particularly. Yeah, thank you.
A couple of closing observations and comments associated with that. I would have expected to hear Prairie State would have been one of the partner organizations. I heard, remember your comments that they were directed, we were directed to South Suburban, Moraine? I understand that. This is only my observation. And geographically, is this basically the same service area? I don't know why. Any insights to that?
Well, so IBAG already chose these partners, and I have no sense that the community college board is also partners, so they probably selected those. But what we're doing is building these pathways for all of our partners. So while we specifically had to get them done for this initiative, we are already in the process of talking to Prairie State, looking at KCC, JJC, and trying to see which of their AASs we could build similar pathways. So we're kind of using this as incentive for ourselves in-house to build more of those AAS-to-bachelor-degree pathways.
Okay, your answer already answered my other question because I don't hear Kinkakee talk very much in these discussions, but they are very much part of our service territory, it's up to.
Yeah, I would add with our transfer boost that Paul and Colleen have added an incentive to this program that we're tying our aim-high transfer scholarships to these students in these cohorts. That's going to make it very attractive to these students. So we should generate, I think, a good enrollment class once this gets off and running.
All right, thank you, Dr. Sexton. Thank you, VP McGinnis. Our next speaker is Dr. Shannon Dermer, who is the dean of the College of Education. And she is going to acquaint you with our activities regarding meeting teacher shortage challenges within our region.
Yes, thank you. It's a pleasure to speak to you today. It's one of my favorite committees because it goes to the heart of why we're all here at GSU. And actually, some of the things I'll talk about will overlap with Dr. Sexton, some of the things she was talking about, in that one of the biggest things I'll be talking about is our Early Childhood Consortium. And as part of that, we have already actually done quite a few agreements with the different community colleges for their AAS. Because as I'll explain, the state, I'll explain more about it later. The state actually forbids us in the college of education, I mean, in the early childhood education area, to require any extra classes from here forward for the people who have the AAS degree as being part of a consortium that I'll talk about. So we've been working on that also, and it's been quite successful. And we've done some innovative things with prior learning assessment. We've done some things with extended learning, who's been amazing, to badge classes for the early childhood education. But I'll start out with the, these are some of the initiatives, and I won't go into detail in each one since you have the presentations. But the Illinois Tutoring Initiative is not directly supporting creating more teachers, but really, we're focusing in on enrollment of students and reducing barriers to them graduating so we can get more teachers out. But we're also supporting the school districts around us, where many of our students work, where our graduates will work, where some people will come back for certifications and endorsements and degrees here. And of course, it's a huge benefit to the children and the community. And so as I think Colleen had said, Dr. Sexton had said, I didn't really apply for this grant. I'd like to take credit for it, but the credit really goes to President Green and our former provost, Beth Kada, in that they made such a nice reputation for GSU that we were chosen for this tutoring initiative. One of only six universities in Illinois who were chosen for this. And it's a $3.4 million grant over two years. We have large grants here at GSU, but not usually that much money over two years. And luckily, they wrote in money so that we could have some full-time staff dedicated to that. There's the executive director, two administrative assistants, and also two graduate assistantships, which helps support our students. And one of the main things that relates to some of our things here is not only are we serving the community through the tutoring, but we're also encouraged to hire tutors from our own students and from other college, other college students. And they are receiving $20 to $30 an hour to do the tutoring. And they get training in the tutoring and they get matched. There's a whole system that Illinois State University has done. And we're trying to match based on area, language, race, and ethnicity, a lot of things that would really help in tutoring the students and help the communities. And so it's an amazing initiative for GSU, for the community, for the state, for the students and the schools. And Janetta Edwards, who's actually one of our INLD students and is going to be graduating soon, and has just been great at GSU. She's worked for us at GSU for a long time, was a graduate of our master's program in counseling, worked as an executive system, as an executive assistant before she came to GSU. She's been doing an amazing job, and we already have agreements with many of the districts. And HR has been wonderful, too, in that one of the complications of this is that we have to hire, by the time this ends, probably a total of 1,500 tutors. And so that's a lot. And so HR, even though they don't get any of the glory, really is doing a lot of the heavy lifting as far as helping us process people and hire them and get their contracts and making sure we're meeting all of everything we're supposed to do. So this is an amazing opportunity for the College of Education, for GSU, for our students who we can indirectly support through this, you know, nice hourly pay. And also, of course, we're prioritizing our students in the Division of Education because then they can also get practice working with students. And we're trying to get them so they can use it for some of the activities for some of their classes. So they get paid and they're meeting requirements for some of their classes. So it's a very nice initiative, even though it's not directly increasing the number of future teachers. That's just the districts we're working with right now. The Early Childhood Consortium, now that directly relates to increasing the number of teachers. And we just found out yesterday that, and this is the one that Dr. Kada and Dr. Green, really, they brought this to GSU. Dr. Kada just called me up and said, Dean Dermer, can you handle this? And I go, I can and I will. $3.4 million and serving our community and our children, we'll find a way. So we have. And, but for this, it's really about increasing the number of teachers in early childhood education. It's about keeping the degrees at the four-year colleges because there was kind of a push to maybe let community colleges give the four-year degree in early childhood education because they thought the four-year universities weren't necessarily serving the incumbent workforce well enough, which I actually disagree with, but, you know. But we will do as we are asked. And actually, it has spurred a lot of great things. We've changed some curriculum to make sure it's more accessible for the incumbent workforce. That means people who are already working in childcare but don't have the degree to move up and to be licensed teachers and things like that. So yesterday, we found out, this is supposed to go from August 2021, but they hadn't given us any money yet, told us to start, but hadn't given us any money. August 2021 to, I believe, June 30th, 2024. And we just found out yesterday, so it wasn't in here, that they will be giving GSU $1.1 million to support those activities. So we're incredibly appreciative to the state and to Illinois Board of Education for that. It will fund things like activities, like the curriculum we've been producing. We had a visiting professor this year, which they will fund. They will backdate the funding for that. We, you know, created a hybrid and nighttime program so that people who are working during the day in the childcare centers can take our degree. The state is offering scholarships so that people can finish their degree in early childhood education for free if they're part of the incumbent workforce. But also, they wrote into the money they gave us to pay off any holds that students might have. They're giving us about $50,000 to pay off holds of some of our current students if that is keeping them from moving forward in their program. There's money for mentor-coaches. There's money for curriculum development, a lot of different things. And we will let them, there's also room for us to come up with our unique and creative ways to support this process. And I have to say that Dr. Joy Patterson, who's our Director of Educator Preparation, has been named to this board, the consortium that's overseeing this. And she does an amazing job for the Division of Education. She really is known statewide and just does an incredible job. She's also helping lead the team, that's not in this, but for a grant for special education to help pay for the, for people to get endorsements or degrees in special education. We hope to get that grant. So she's quite active. Later, I'll be talking about the diversity pipeline for teachers, and she is also, you know, helping to lead that initiative. But the Early Childhood Consortium, one of the things I mentioned was a lot of people come with the AAS degree. And we were told that we cannot ask them to take any extra requirements, classes, than what our native students, our students who start here, do. And so we had to get creative. We worked on PLA, the Prior Learning Assessment. And we've also worked on, so one of the concerns relates to accreditation, that although it's about getting the degree, we also have an accrediting body that we have to answer to. And that some of these people who come from the community colleges that are taking the upper-level classes at the community colleges, and they don't have that accreditation, the CAPE accreditation, but we do. And how do we make sure if they're taking their upper-level classes there that they're getting what they need for the accreditation? And at first, the faculty wanted to have them do some extra activities. And I said, absolutely not. The law says that we cannot do that. And so what we came up with was, we also have some students that don't pass their content exams on the first try and have to take it multiple times. So I had asked them, and they agreed to do this, was to come up with some modules that we have all students take and for free. And that, and they have to take it before they graduate and get at least like a 70% on the modules. And the benefit of that is it makes sure that the people coming from the community colleges have their knowledge. And then it's also a study guide for all our students to help them pass the content exam. So those are the kind of creative things where in the past, we would have made them take an extra class. And that would have cost them time and money. These modules, they can do on their own time. They'll be in our blackboard system. They can take it as many times as they want until they pass a certain level of content knowledge. So it really has spurred us to do some creative things. And so that's the best, the best outcome of these types of things. And of course, we're focusing, so it's focusing on accessibility for some of our financially underrepresented students. There's a big focus on making sure that some of our students are underrepresented as far as race and ethnicity are included. And, excuse me. And so it really fits with our mission here also. So we're doing a lot of work on that. And the Early Childhood Education faculty have been working their tails off. And then we've had so much support from the university, allowing us to have the visiting professor, which now we can pay back for that. But also, like I said, with extended learning, that we created some badges so that people who are a little afraid to maybe start at the university because they've been out for a long time, that we created the paraprofessional badge, Parat Teacher Initiative, that, and actually, Joy Patterson helped to get some legislation. It used to be you had to be 19 in order to become a paraprofessional. And she'd helped put forward some legislation to reduce that to 18 so that as soon as people graduate high school, they could, you know, go the paraprofessional route. And there's different ways you can become a paraprofessional. If you have an associate's degree, if you have so many credits. But also, there's a training, and our extended learning is offering that training. I had nothing to do with that. But they came to me and said, do you think we could badge some of this information so that people who go through this training, that we can, they can go through some extra training if they want to earn some credits later? And I said, yes. So basically, they get the badges from this. And then we're going to create some exams and some content that if they can pass that, it will give them credit in some of our classes for the Early Childhood Education Program, up to two courses. And so that way, it costs them a little bit less money. They've already done most of the work from this para part, but then they feel like, oh, now I've earned some credit. I'm on my way toward this degree. And it gets them, you know, further toward their degree. And we're hoping that will entice more of the incumbent workforce also. Again, a creative thing between multiple parts of GSU to get that done. And it's being supported by grants in extended learning, so, which will actually pay for the badging for some of those students. One of the other, one of the other big initiatives that we're doing that relates to our mission of, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion here at GSU is the Diversity Pipeline Advisory Team. And this is being required by the state. But Attorney Hampton is the lead on this, along with Joy Patterson. And there's a bunch of us who are on the committee. And there was a link in the PowerPoint, but it wasn't working. So I actually sent it to Penny, that she, to Ms. Purdue, that she can send it out to you that shows our initial plan of how we're going to really try and help increase the number of students of color who go into teaching and then, and then support them actually to stay enrolled. Because you can get students in the door, you have to support them to stay enrolled. And also, there's some other faculty, including Dr. Marlon Cummings, who have a grant where they're working on looking at success initiatives for African-American male students that can connect with some of this also. But we have the draft of our Diversity Pipeline, our mission statement, and what our plans are for that. Again, Penny can email it to you if you'd like to see all of the specifics. But we're trying to get more people in the door and then keep them here because what we see a lot with some of the teacher candidates is either, they don't come. Once they come, they don't stay in teaching. But then especially for our teachers of color, that they burn out within the first five years once they're placed in the schools. And I think that's partially maybe because they go to some of the schools that are higher need and partially because maybe the schools overburden them because they're like, great, we have a teacher of color who can finally be this great mentor. And, you know, especially some of the African-American and Latinx male teachers, which are even less represented. And so we're not exactly, so we're working on that, too, before, during, and after, supporting them. And then, oh, this is the culturally responsive teaching and learning standards. It's just what Illinois has adopted and that we have to make sure that we're incorporating into our work. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about any of those initiatives or anything else that the College of Education is doing. I have to say, we're prioritizing grants. That has been kind of my thing because I think that's one of the best ways to support the students, the faculty, and the university, that many of our grants are applied and workforce grants where we can directly give scholarships to students. And so that helps them get through. But also, it brings money to the university. But also, we have a lot of workshops and trainings that we open up to everyone in the College of Education and sometimes the whole university. So I just really feel like grants are important. And I know our new provost, who barely has her toe in the door, is already doing things to help us, you know, to make grants more feasible, along with President Green, by supporting our OSPR, our Office of Sponsored Programs and Research, and supporting some of the colleges. of the colleges and having some help writing the grants. So I'm very happy about that. And it's one of the things the College of Education has prioritized.
Great. Thumbs up first, and then I'll ask you a question.
I do. Questions specifically, I saw, I saw the call for tutors, and you said 1,500 does sound like a pretty aggressive number. How are we looking right now? Is it having good response, fits and starts, or what?
So I have to say that because they released a lot of the stuff about eight months after they told us to start, we're, we're a little, the whole group is behind, but G S U is actually ahead of all of the other schools because we started right away, except for ISU, who's running the whole thing. But I believe right now, we only have about, about 50 tutors, but we only got, the governor didn't even announce this until like a month ago. So it was kind of hard to do things before we were allowed to completely advertise and before they had released the funds. But we're actually doing pretty well. We have several MOUs. Ms. Edwards actually had her team attend a tutoring, like, open house recently. We're advertising to our students. They're beginning to advertise to other students. D M L D, you know, who does some of the studio stuff, has been an amazing partner. Also, they're about to film a, a small video that we can put out on Facebook, that we can put out on YouTube. We can do an attachment to any of the emails explaining what this is. So we have a long way to go with the tutors, but we're actually ahead of all the other partners except for ISU.
What are the ultimate qualifications for tutoring? What do they have to be to be a tutor? You mentioned, you mentioned students tutors, but I didn't get if that was your, is your pool for tutors or students in need of tutoring services?
That's an excellent question. The people who can be, you can be a tutor if you'd like. But all you have to do is show that you had an A or B in English or math, and that you're willing to go through our, you're out. That's, and you have to be willing to go, there's actually an online training for the tutors. You have to be willing to go through the trainers and through the trainings and of course, follow all the rules. But they want us to prioritize college students. So it's an indirect way of supporting, you know, people who are going to go out into the field and getting their degrees. But really, anyone can be a tutor. And so they're, they're looking to send things out to all the school districts, the colleges in the area, but also churches, Amazon, you know, any big corporations. Because really, anyone who has the heart to do it and some of the knowledge, it's fine for them to do it. And it can be, they want us to prioritize in-person tutoring, which is one-on-one, and that's $20 an hour. But also, you could do online, which is two to one for $30 an hour. You're tutoring two students. And so that allows for them to tutor people, you know, a little further away. Like, you know, someone, a tutor could be, you know, an hour away, but still do the online tutoring of two students without having to travel to their school. So really, if you would like to suggest anyone for tutoring, if you would like to apply, we'd be happy. But they're, they're targeting lots of different schools, agencies, religious organizations. And so you'll be seeing a lot more of that.
Chambers of Commerce, South suburban regional chambers of commerce, to have them reach out to their membership to look for, some people young in their earnings careers might appreciate another 20, 30 bucks more an hour.
Yeah. I will, oh, here's, I will make sure to let Ms. Edwards know that. Yeah, so we're looking.
Cali Mid-Airi Industrial Commission also is another avenue to support. They can reach out to their members also, businesses and industries in the region.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and also further in your conversation, you talked about mentor coaches. And that is, what's the distinction between a tutor and mentor coach, I guess? I didn't get if they were related or not.
The tutors are for the, the children out in the, out in the community. The mentors that we'll hire for the Early Childhood Education Consortium are really to help keep people, keep people enrolled once they get here, that they're, they're in the incumbent workforce, are going to go out and become teachers. So the mentors, coaches are for people who are enrolled at G S U. Because remember, as I said, a lot of people tend to, not a lot, but people tend to drop out. We want to keep them in the program and make sure they feel supported. And so that's what the mentors will do. They're for college students. The tutors are for children, basically, third grade through eighth grade.
All right.
Questions here? Oh, excuse me. I love to read.
Shannon, are we including Ameritea faculty? Because they seem like they would be a tremendous asset and resource for this initiative.
You know what? I know that they have reached out. So one of the issues with getting some of the tutors is that there are, there's such a shortage of teachers and substitute teachers right now that they're reaching out to Ameritea faculty and they're reaching out to retired teachers to do that. So we're kind of competing for some of that. But I'll ask them specifically, I believe they did reach out and they also had contacted retired teachers, but, you know, from the, from K through 12. But I will ask Ms. Edwards to make sure that she has contacted our Ameritea. That's a very good idea. And I know that there's, I know several of people that they would, if they have the time and that they would love to do something like that. So I'll make sure she has done that.
The only other comment I wanted to make is trustees, I really want us to pay very close attention to the volume of work that Dean Dermer is taking on, on top of her dean's duties. The deans are sitting here, and they know what is involved in one grant. Dean Dermer has agreed to take on six different initiatives on top of her regularly, regular duties. And she really should be commended for the level of work that she is providing.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I love the work, but it is a lot. But as long as it's benefiting G S U and our students, I'm happy to do it. So thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
So next up, we'll be hearing about our new Summer Bridge Program. So we're sort of segueing on, still on the theme of mentoring and student support with a different population. So I'm pleased to introduce to you the interim dean of the College of Arts and Sciences, Dr. Jason Zingsheim. And with him is Dr. Mary Carrington, who is the Chair of the Division of Science, Math, and Technology. And she also is serving as the interim Executive Director of Graduate Studies.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I'll get us started. I'm Mary Carrington. Dean Zingsheim and I will be talking with you today about, first, about a historical initiative that we conducted to provide our incoming freshmen with additional academic support. And then we'll focus on a new initiative that we're going to be starting in the summer, which we're calling the Summer Bridge Program. So I'll get started on this, and I'll talk to you about, give you a little bit of historical context. Around the time, soon after the time, we transitioned to a four-year institution with incoming freshmen. We determined that many of the freshmen coming in were in need of additional preparation or academic, academic support, primarily concerning the gateway courses in mathematics and English. So we instituted what we called Smart Start. And the way that Smart Start worked, we started it in 2016. And it was a program that was in, it took place in the immediate two weeks before the start of fall semester. And each incoming freshman was required to take a form of placement test for both mathematics and English. And if they scored below a certain threshold score, they were required to attend Smart Start. So this was the two-week program. It was no charge to students, which was great. But on the flip side, they earned no academic credit for the program. They were required to attend, but they really had no quote, skin in the game because they weren't earning academic credit. So we did have some attendance problems with students, and we occasionally had some problems with students not engaging during Smart Start. We did have some good news from the program. We had some anecdotal evidence that students going through the program had an increased sense of belonging at G S U, which was great. But we didn't really see measurable increased success in the actual courses, in the mathematics and English courses. So we discontinued Smart Start in 2020. And I'm going to turn it over to Dean, Dean Zingsheim, and he'll talk to you about what we're planning to do.
Thank you, Dr. Carrington. So I'll start with the goals. As we transition to the Summer Bridge Program, we want to make sure that we continue to provide support for the incoming first-year students who we traditionally know have needed additional support. And now we know they've also been disproportionately severely impacted by the pandemic and lingering unemployment and isolation. One of our goals is to avoid the perception of remedial or developmental education. The goal here is to help our students leap into college. It is entirely forward-looking. It's not about making up any kind of deficiency. We also want to make sure that they're being successful in actual credit-bearing courses and that we're providing them with the academic and social supports that they can be successful moving forward while keeping that increased sense of belonging. Because we know based on the research that increased belonging increases their persistence as well. So in designing the Summer Bridge Program, we're calling it the Jaguar Leap, which stands for Live, Experience, and Prepare. It is an immersive six-week program where they will be living on campus in Prairie Place. It is for our first-time, full-time students, where we'll be able to provide wraparound support services through that six-week program. We're going to cap it at 75 students this first year, which will allow a kind of cohort sense where they'll get to know a number of folks, their fellow students, as well as faculty and staff. And it will come at no extra cost to students. They will be given a deposit, so they will have skin in the game, and they'll be earning seven credit hours, I'll get to in a minute. But that deposit will be applied towards their fall semester. And we're able to do that this year through the HERF funding, through the CARES grant. In the program, they'll earn seven credit hours. It comes from three different classes, the first-year seminar, one of the social behavioral science gen ed courses, and Mastering College. Those three courses will be curricularly linked, so students will be able to start to see connections across their coursework, regardless of which actual sections they might be in. And they'll be supported not only by the faculty and staff, but also with embedded peer mentors and writing fellows. So they'll be getting that assistance in writing and the assistance in what it means to be a college student through those peer mentors, which we think and hope and believe will have a very positive impact on their experience and their efficacy, self-efficacy, and confidence as they're able to see themselves succeeding in these seven credit hours. It'll also allow them to take fewer courses in fall and spring while staying on track to graduate in four years. So the 30 to finish, we found that the more credit hour students load onto themselves, the less they will actually successfully complete. So by having them finish seven over the summer, that frees them up to take 12 in the fall and 12 in the spring and thereby be more successful in more of those courses the first time through. In addition to the academic courses, they'll be getting guided advisement and more time with the first-year advisor rather than last minute, right before classes start. We'll be also adding, we've heard a little bit about the micro-credentialing and the badging, and we'll be offering those in financial literacy, career and major exploration, and math preparation. And then there'll be a number of other enrichment activities throughout the six-week program, both on campus and off. And that's kind of an overview of the program and some of the impact we think it'll have. We believe that it will have this, but we are also going to trust and verify by tracking student success through the entire program. And the team that's working on this is too large to put on the slides. It would have doubled the length of the presentation. We had a Zoom meeting yesterday and the whole thing was full. But I do want to acknowledge that people are working from across the university. A number of folks from Student Affairs and Enrollment Management to new academic programs, faculty, staff, administrators. It's a wide-ranging team that's working to pull this together. So I want to thank them, but also appreciate the work that still lies before us as we build it for the summer. But I think the best thing, they just probably turn it over for questions and conversation about it.
You go first because I have plenty.
Okay, I got a few too. Okay, so, so the program, it's six-week immersion, cabinet is 75. By, by, how do they know it exists? How, how are we getting word out to students? And is just the first 75 that show interest get it? Or are they ranked or prioritized or based on any other metric that we got to try and adhere to? What's the deal with that?
Yeah, so we will be pushing this out to all of our admitted students as soon as we are done with the backend. It takes a little bit of work with a third party to get the coding right, to communicate between the systems, and we are very close to having that done. So then we'll push this out to all of our admitted students, and they'll apply for it. They will have to apply for the FAFSA for this current year, the 21, 22, because it'll occur over the summer. So those Pell funds will be available. And then they'll also apply for the FAFSA for next year. We'll also be checking to make sure that they are not honors-eligible because our honors-eligible students have access to other support services through the honors program. So we want to prioritize those who are coming in not at that already level of academic success. And then at this point, I think it will be more on a first-come, first-serv basis if we get up to 75. We've never done this before, so we don't know what the attraction, well, we know the attraction will be, you get seven credit hours free, you get to start college early, you get to live on campus. But we don't know how, what the demand will look like quite yet.
So that's the attractiveness. You earn credit in advance, the money's applied towards your fall enrollment if you do, and, and try to get it, get experience there also. Because my question was going to be, what makes us think this is going to be dramatically different than the one we discontinued in 2020? But I remember your comments, so I understand your comments too. But it'll be interesting to see how much interest we get in this and how well it's communicated to them, availability.
Yeah, with SLATE, we'll be able to communicate to every single student about it, a lot, as much as we need to, until we, we max out.
That's it for now.
How, how are you funding it?
This year through the HERF grant. So the, some of the CARES funding, and I know there's two different grants, so I want to apologize to Rasha for confusing them. But the, the cabinet has agreed with an MOU to fund up to $350,000 from the HERF federal funds that we have. And then we'll be tracking all of the costs through the grant, and we'll get some of the Pell money to offset some of those costs as well, too. And then, once we have the data on how successful it is and where we can make room for improvement for version 2.0 for the following summer, then as an institution, we'll figure out how to best fund it moving forward.
Did you make a conscious decision to limit it to incoming freshmen at G S U versus opening it to others that may or may not have applied here or maybe even further? They're, they finished their junior year. Just trying to find your, how you came to these parameters?
Yeah, I think our focus was on supporting the incoming students who are making the transition into college with this, having the residential focus, and then also the fact that they're taking first-year seminar and Mastering College, which are required courses for students who start with us. A lot of our transfer students, if they're coming with an associate's degree, would not need those courses. So it wouldn't necessarily be useful for them at this point in their college career.
I meant juniors, high school juniors.
Oh, high school junior. Oh, okay. All right.
They're going to be going to college, but not, not in a month or whatever, three months?
Right, a year and three months. Got it, got it, got it. Yeah, I think in terms of starting off as a pilot, we wanted to work with a population that we're familiar with serving and familiar with communicating with. And I don't know if, there are, might be some other complications with having high school juniors live on campus.
What could possibly go wrong?
I'd rather not know, which is why I don't work in housing. Oh, yeah. What used to be the barn? Yeah.
I don't know what barn is, but okay. But, but essentially, you consider, you, you don't know whether you're going to get a big response or not. You limit it to 75 because that's 75 students that you expect to have continue here and put a hook, an incentive, let's put it that way, to, to attend. And I presume that there, that you have to, what is it, successfully complete it if you're going to have the credit, the, and the credit, the credit mean the financial credit as well as, okay, I understand all those. I, I'm not versed enough as to the difference between juniors and seniors or kind of getting students hooked even a year earlier, but.
Yeah, I think the ultimate goal is we'll be able to use this, I mean, this year, we'll be using it predominantly to support the students who have already applied and been admitted. Moving forward, when it's in place, we can look farther ahead and be using this as a recruitment opportunity so that even more students will see this as a way that they can come to G S U and get the support that they need or want and be able to start college earlier. I mean, if they're trying to maybe get out of home sooner, they can start on campus in July with us, and that might be a good recruitment opportunity for us.
I applaud your efforts in this initiative. This is superb.
It's a large-team effort.
Let me reinforce what you already said, you know, building on his comments about the high school juniors and stuff, too. Maybe some knocks for them, maybe not so much for them to spend time on campus for us, but just is to, you know, start to use the guidance counselors of the high schools for information about, you know, as they're trying to figure what to do for college, if to do for college, just give them some more information about incentivizing them to stay local. So that's preaching to the choir, I appreciate that, though. I have no further questions.
Okay, good.
Thank you both, all right. And then our closing presentation today is by Dr. Rosemary Johnson, who is our Associate Provost. And she will be speaking on the faculty evaluation process leading to the tenure recommendations.
Okay, my presentation is a little different than the three that we've heard. I'm basically here to give you a refresher on the tenure process, because at the next meeting of this committee, President Green will be bringing to you her recommendations for faculty upon whom the board actually bestows tenure. And I know both trustee Tobias and trustee Caderas are familiar with this, you've done this before. So this will be a kind of quick, you know, quick review and highlight. I tried to put a lot of information in the slides themselves so that you can refer back to that. So the first slide. Tenure is not a new thing, and it is not unique to GSU. It has a long history in higher education. So I wanted to start by acknowledging that. And at the end, there are some links where you can go look at more information about that. Tenure is not, as it is sometimes popularly represented, it is not a job for life. Tenured faculty here at GSU undergo a review every four years. And tenured faculty can always be dismissed for, you know, serious breaches of conduct and things like that. So it is not a job for life. And I think it's important to understand how much evaluation takes place before a faculty member is given tenure, and then the fact that, once they are tenured, they are still, you know, expected to be performing as we expect faculty to perform. So the place where you come in is when you are asked to award tenure. Faculty are awarded tenure within a specific division or department, and that is part of what will be presented to you. These are sections from the collective bargaining agreement here at GSU. Our tenure process follows the kind of, you know, global arc of tenure review processes, but its specific form is set by the collective bargaining agreement with University Professionals of Illinois. A little bit of kind of big context for the UPI bargaining unit. The Unit A faculty are the ones that have academic rank. These are the tenure stream faculty, and they are the ones who are evaluated to move from Assistant Professor to Associate Professor with tenure. Those are usually linked, and they are explicitly linked in our collective bargaining agreement. The collective bargaining unit also includes Unit B lecturers, who do a lot of really important work for the university, and Unit B academic support professionals, which includes academic advisors, the director of the Writing Center, people like that. But this tenure process only applies to those Unit A faculty. I've given you reference to some of the main articles in the collective bargaining agreement. It's a very big document. So if you want to go look, those are the obvious places to start. So I also gave you the annual evaluation calendar. And I think it's a handy way to see all the different levels of review. So if you're looking down on the left-hand column, you see who's being reviewed, year-two faculty or promotion to full professor. And if you look across the top of it, you're seeing the different evaluators who weigh in on the process. There's faculty evaluation committees within the division or department, and then there's also a university-level faculty personnel committee, which is elected. And then there's Chair, Dean, and then it comes up to the Provost and President. So I think there's a kind of helpful visual way to see all the evaluation that is taking place. So when President Green brings this recommendation to you at the next meeting, these people have undergone this annual, year after year after year, and then they undergo a cumulative evaluation for the Year Six tenure and promotion. They submit a portfolio of work that is the basis for evaluation. We have specific criteria, which are, it's a faculty-led process within the divisions and departments, because the contract itself uses terms like "superior" and "highly effective." But those are operationalized and made a lot more concrete in the Division/Department criteria. And obviously, what superior performance looks like for an accounting professor might be different than what it looks like for an artist. So that's why we have the Division/Department criteria. And this calendar, it is not part of the contract, but its existence is in there, and we do it every year, and it has to be agreed to by the Union Chapter President and the Provost Office. Specifically, Year Six, you can see these laid out for you on that calendar, but you can see all the stages that have happened by the time President Green is going to be bringing these people to you. You may remember from previous years that it will include a brief paragraph for each person, giving you some highlights of their teaching, research, and service, so that you'll have a sense of what their accomplishments are. And then the final slide is just to give you links to some resources. You can always get in touch with me. I have this five-minute version of this presentation. I could also give you a three-hour version of it. So do not hesitate to reach out to me with questions. And then I've given you a link here to an outside source, the AAUP and the AAC, and you have a jointly endorsed statement. This is kind of the national standard for tenure in American higher education, so you're welcome to go look at that. And then the final link on this slide is within the GSU portal. And when you go to the Provost section of the portal, you can find all kinds of documents, including all of the Division/Department criteria, if you want to see specifically what it looks like and things like that. So again, don't hesitate to reach out to me at any time if you have questions. And at the next meeting, when President Green is bringing you her recommendations, I'll be at that meeting, too. So anyway, so that's what I have.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
I do. A couple of comments and questions. Comments first, I mean, yeah, we have heard a lot about tenure, but just don't ever forget that, you know, most of us in our professional careers, there is no parallel. So it is all that we've heard about and to kind of sort of know about. We don't really know until, yeah, so our gratitude for your patience in educating us and keep it in the forefront. I like the summary version at this point. Now, we're relatively informed about what the process is to remind us, tell who helps us with our discussion with the other board members. Okay, so that's my comment, thank you very much. My question is, regards to the consideration for tenure, this is all as laid out in the collective bargaining agreements. Is any this discretionary? Are there circumstances? And the only thing that occurs in my mind is waiting for something to be published, which is one of the thresholds for consideration for granting or consideration of tenure? Or anything else discretionary or relying upon something else? Or does it have to comply with the X years that says so in their collective bargaining agreement?
Well, one of the things that happens with this process, where the faculty have their first evaluation, their, the second semester of their first year here, and the process is formative in the beginning. People receive guidance. Most of the Division/Department criteria are cognizant of the fact, as in they specifically recognize that academics don't always have control over when something is going to actually be published. So I would say both yes and no, that there are certain things that need to be met. I mean, you can't have a situation where someone says, "Well, this person hasn't published anything, but they're such a nice colleague, let's give them tenure." That does not happen. But I think one of the reasons that we have so many levels of evaluation, and it includes both faculty committees and administrators, is that you get a lot of perspectives. And we have the criteria, which are set out, everyone knows what they are, in advance. And all of the levels of evaluation are making a recommendation to the President, and ultimately, the decision lies with the President.
So going back to our example about publication, if there is a delay, let, nobody's fault except the publisher's fault, could, would, would the normal track be for tenure to be delayed until that is officially published? Or would be tentatively approved pending completion, publication of whatever?
The first six years, they have to happen at those times. And the other ones, like when you get promoted to professor, there's an eligibility that's defined, but you're not obliged to go up for it once you're eligible. So at that level, it's easier for people to wait until they have the requisite number of publications. But the Year Six, and this is one of the reasons why, in the COVID MOUs that we negotiated with the Union, there was provision made for people to request an additional year, so that we have people who have asked for and been granted an additional year to give them more time in recognition of the impacts on their research that the pandemic had. So, I mean, nothing is arbitrary. I mean, I'm sort of thinking through the implications of your questions. These decisions are not, they are not arbitrary. And it's a very transparent process. At each level of evaluation, the faculty member receives the letter evaluating with its recommendation at the time that it's issued, so as it's moving forward. So we have a really good process here at GSU. It's very labor-intensive. You can imagine all of those evaluators doing all of that evaluating. But it means there's no surprises, right? By the time you get to Year Six, you have a cumulative portfolio, you've been documenting your work, and you've received evaluations on that work. So that it, like I said, it's labor-intensive, but it's open, and it's fair, I think.
Very helpful, thank you, and no further questions.
I understand that some universities are walking away from the tenure. And I don't know the pros and cons of it. They're probably more financially driven than anything else, but I don't know if you can, if you care to comment on...
My comment on that would be that, yes, we do see that with contingent faculty being an increasing number of hires. That's something that happens at the time of hiring. So if you are hired as a tenure-track faculty member, that's in the contract when you were hired. So it is not that people can be shunted off into a different kind of position, but if there is less hiring of tenure-track faculty, and that, I think we do see that sort of nationwide. But the thing about tenure, it's, it's a long-term commitment. And I know Professor Golland has spoken about this in Faculty Senate meetings, that it is a commitment between the institution and the tenured faculty member, and it's connected to, you know, freedom to research on popular subjects and things like that. But because those tenured positions represent that kind of commitment, you may find, often, for financial reasons, institutions less willing to commit to the future of six years from now, we have this tenured faculty member with that level of commitment, so.
Sorry, just clarification. Contingent faculty, that is those that agree to be on the tenure track? Your Unit A teachers that continue?
Yeah, no, the contingent faculty are often year-to-year. Sometimes they get like a two-year contract, but it's not the continuing expectation of employment that the tenure-stream faculty have.
Yeah, it's, so the administration makes it work according to how they project enrollment and stuff like that? They make a decision whenever they do a hire action, whether it's one year, five years, indefinite, or, okay?
Yeah, so, and here at GSU, when it's time to hire someone, whether it's a replacement or a need for a new position, and so like Dean Dermer's example, they brought in someone out of visiting because this was a need that they knew that they had for a specific period of time, so that they didn't want, they didn't need to bring in someone on the tenure track. GSU has a really good record, I think, in continuing to seek and support tenure-stream faculty.
Last comment from my part. Having listened to what goes on in tenure at GSU for... I'm sorry, I'm still reeling for when you told me that the...
How many years ago was?
Yeah, how long ago that show was.
Hasn't recovered yet.
It was put down. That the tenure process here works pretty darn good. Effective, it's kind of, it's, it would be, it could easily pass any scrutiny. The, if I had to do an observation, it would be, I would be, make sure that it works on time. There has been, I mean, that it proceeds on a timely manner. I know that there have been more than one kind of action brought to the board, which needs to be done kind of quickly, or because this person's about to retire, or this person. Something unusual, I guess. It's just timeliness, I don't know if that's, if that is an issue or not, but that's what memory tells me. It's the only highlight that I would comment on, because it's like accreditation. It's been going so well that...
Right, well, and I think, so I thought I heard you mention the Emeritus, and then that's a separate, right? That runs through a university policy. And that time we have, but these, that calendar is an absolute calendar. And sometimes, if, if there's a negative recommendation, then faculty have the right to request reconsideration. And so we can end up with some extensions, but by and large, these processes, they, they, they're like the trains in France, they run on time.
Good, great, thank you, thank you.
And that concludes our new business and presentations. And I would like to take a moment to thank all of our colleagues for their thoughtful work in presenting this, and thank you for your questions and for your engagement with them as well. It's a lot of information. And of course, you have it in the board book, and you have contact people. So if there's anything further that you would like to know after the meeting, then please be sure to let us know, and we'll be happy to follow up with you accordingly.
Yeah, we want to know what you could do in your second two weeks.
Well, it's pretty much looks like this.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, quite informative. I should, I want to highlight a couple of things. One is, in the future, I would like to cover topics like, as we discussed, on the metrics used externally on ranking universities, et cetera, just out of ignorance used externally on ranking universities, et cetera, just out of ignorance in terms of how we track on some of them. And I thank you very much for getting to the point like you did on this meeting. Before ending.
There's one closing comment also. I think the chair and I would both agree that also don't wait for a whoops to happen before you bring it to our attention. This is, we want background information, information what's going on in the university, makes us better trustees and have better discussions with the other trustees also, but nobody likes surprises, we can all deal with, especially adversity if we see it coming. So if there's something that you think, your gut feels says that, yeah, you kind of should speak up, let us know about it, even if it was an unofficial agenda item, we can approach it appropriately, that's all.
Thank you, we will.
I'd like, just out of courtesy, I'd like to give Dr. Gollan opportunity, if there's anything he wants to say, because he has attended so many meetings of representing the Faculty Senate, and some of them used to be quite lengthy reports. And then I'd like to give Dr. Green the last word, you see if there's anything she would like to say. So if I, if any, anything that you would care to address us?
No.
Okay.
That was literally a word.
Dr. Green?
I think my last comment would be that as we prepare to transition to the end of this academic year, with commencement approaching us, May 14th, I'm told we have over 1,250 students that are preparing to graduate from GSU this spring. We will have commencement in person. I'm delighted it'll be my first in-person commencement, but higher ed, and the state of Illinois and GSU will continue to navigate the tumultuous challenges set before us by what's happening on a national level in terms of funding, student demographics, public policy, and preparing students for academic achievement, closing equity gaps, so on and so forth. All universities are navigating that, and the enrollment shifts. I believe that GSU is well-positioned, and I'm more confident every day to navigate these challenges successfully. And I truly value the team that we have that is working towards that end. That work started prior to my arrival, that work has continued since my arrival, and since my arrival, it has intensified and survived, and I am very proud to represent the university. And we are working, as for GSU, and I have much to say about that in future meetings. I know the board is interested in innovation, new directions, new external revenue streams. We are preparing some things for you. We have some announcements coming that we can't let out yet, and there are a lot of great things happening, and the things that need our attention have our attention. And so I am just really wanting to close on that note. I thank the Board of Trustees, the Academic Affairs Committee members for their support, their concern, and their, you know, true commitment to GSU, because that is evident. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. To, is there any new business you would like to, not by me? None here either, so there's no new business to discuss. I'll enter in motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate all the presentations, all the work you do in the background. Thank you very much, helpful.
Thank you.
I'm sure my presentation was the most appreciated.